Holton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Are steeped in Indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Director Klein, could you please lead us in the opening prayer, the Our Father National Anthem?
Certainly. On Sunday, we mark the end of the Paschal season with the Feast of Pentecost. So this prayer is one of Pentecost. It's entitled, "Come Holy Spirit." In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Come, Holy Spirit, help me to replace the busyness of my life with a simpler lifestyle. So I will focus on the deeper things in life and allow time for others. Nourish my yearning to understand and to appreciate myself. Keep me from being too self-oriented and unmindful of others' needs. Fill me with trust in your consoling presence. Calm me when I am anxious and troubled about many things. Help me to have the courage to empty myself of everything that does not contribute to the transformation of this world. Continue to create a deep hunger for you within me. Feed me with the finest wheat of your joy, peace, and love. Often replenish my weary spirit with an enthusiasm and an energy that comes from surrendering my life to you. Be my wisdom as I search for meaning in a world fraught with pain, suffering, hostility, and division. Keep me hungry for you, source of life, so that I will always ache and yearn a bit for you. Amen. Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven. In thy name, thy kingdom come.
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True nature love in all of us common. With glory hearts we seek. We fight a true Lord strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Far deep our land, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, Director Klein. Item 1.2, motions arising from in-camera. There were no motions from the in-camera session that'll require a vote in the public session. We move on to our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Can I have the agenda up on screen, please? Thank you. Do we have any trustees? Do we have any additions, additions or corrections to the agenda? And does trustee want any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for a mover, please. Trustee Carabella moves. Seconded by trustee Powell. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Chua. Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Deepu, are you online? Trustee Carabella.
Yeah, I'm on.
Are you in favor or not? Trustee Deepu.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. Move on to our next order of business, declarations of conflict of interest. Do we have any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we shall now move on to our next order of business, which is presentations. Item 4.1, senior staff update. Director Klein, please present a presentation for today.
Thank you, Chair. As is our routine, we have senior staff updates. And this one is presented and led by our Superintendent of Special Education, Superintendent Cassandra Jack Caldera. And it is about our, something, again, something to celebrate, something wonderful, and that is our Best Buddies program. And she will give an update, and I will hand the mic over to her figuratively and take it away. That was my dramatic, allowing you to get to the microphone. So go ahead.
Through you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. It's my distinct pleasure tonight to be able to provide an update on the Spring Mingle, which took place on April 17th as an extension of our Best Buddies program that we have offered in our secondary schools. So it took place Wednesday, April the 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School. And we received an overwhelming response, not only in students accessing and participating in the dance, but a number of pieces that came together as far as staff and volunteers. We had nine schools participating. The only high school that didn't have students to send was Kateri, so we hope to see them be part of our Spring Mingle in the future as the population at St. Kateri continues to grow. We had over 180 students, 183 students. And we had almost the same amount of staff participating in a combination of EAs. So our educational assistants, our special education teachers, our special education resource teachers, as well as our department heads. And then we had Best Buddies, so the peers that support the program in the secondary school. We had 45 students who act as Best Buddies, also attend. There was great attention to detail, and each school had signage that indicated their seating area and, you know, was thoughtfully selected in theme of the Spring Mingle. We had a number of committee members. I do have to give a shout out. I'm here by myself, but definitely a number of people were involved. Andrea Jones, the EA manager, she was the chair of this committee. Denise Coley, Angela Cook, a number of other support staff, Katie Morelli, Katie Mann, Bert Riddle, Anita Bennett, and Andrea Borg were also committee members. Some of them are pictured here. There was no shortage of attention to detail as well. So you'll see that all of the signage was in support of the theme of the Spring Mingle. And we had a number of staff volunteers in a variety of capacities, also support the day. Again, spared no expense as far as attention to detail to ensure that our students had an experience that not only met, but exceeded the expectations that we held for ourselves. And the next slide. We also had a number of staff from Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School support. So the principal, Teresa Castellaren, was amazing. The SHIELD staff lead, Ryan Latimer, and the student volunteers, they were phenomenal. And we had AV staff, Daryl Joseph, and student volunteers who came and made sure that the tunes were non-stop. We did have some budgetary needs, so I'll take the next few slides just to speak a little bit about where the money went. The community committee worked on getting both monetary donations as well as donations of gift cards, sport equipment, and activity passes. And we also worked with Media Access, consulted with Strategic Communications to use social media to celebrate this live event. Roughly, we spent $3,881 on busing. We spent $2,800 on food, decor, and crafts. Some student-generated funds. There was a participation fee which generated 25, just over $2,500. And then we received an overwhelming online cash donation of $7,500. The DJ was free of just their time. Well, their time is valuable, but there wasn't an expense. And then the raffle prizes were all based on private donations. The food costs were also covered by donated gift cards, Longos, Costco, and Metro. And then we had volunteers set up for table chairs, setup, and deliveries in coordination with facilities, facilities who were awesome as well. There was a lot of planning that went into the event. We had to consider emergency procedures. So we did a review of fire routes, lockdown, and first aid responses. We had some calming areas and higher lifts, which were delivered and scheduled. And HCSB Facilities Department delivered the tables, equipment, and provided support staff to be on hand throughout the day. We had several event stations. The food station was very popular. There was pizza, juice boxes and water bottles, Rice Krispies, chips, cake, and cookies. No one left hungry that day. The game station was also quite popular. We had tabletop and floor games. Jenga was very popular. Connect Four, my personal favorite, coloring, beanbag toss, hula hoop toss, and the ladder game. The photo booth allowed all schools to take photos either in a group or individually. And there was a sign-up sheet with a schedule. There was a backdrop provided. There was prop management. There were some students who, you know, gravitated to one prop over another. And the pictures were sent out to school staff to capture the memories. And the last station was my favorite. No, that's not true. Crafts and raffles took place as well. So there was something for everybody who attended on the day. And it just, again, all the details, all the considerations that went into this was really high level. The last station was my favorite station, the dance party. So there was old school, there was new school, there was all kinds of songs singing. So the dance party took place in the gym. And, you know, the DJ was very responsive, playing all the popular hits for some of the... At one point, I think it was mostly staff that was still on the dance floor, but we definitely had a great time. And we did trade off on the supervision and making sure that there was engagement and mic management throughout the day. So that was our Best Buddies. I'm happy to say that we are in the process of planning for the Life Skills Prom. And so those details have begun in its preliminary stages to be shared with school teams. And yeah, it was a great day. Feel good. I didn't want to leave. And I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. We have a couple of speakers here. Vice Chair Agnew, you're the floor.
Thank you for you, Mr. Chair. So thank you for the opportunity.
Check, check.
I've had the opportunity to attend events similar to this in the past, and they were fantastic events. Just looking at how we continue to make these sustainable. So I saw the breakdown of the costing. But can you just speak a little bit to where does that funding come from? How much of the schools contributing? Is there board funding that goes towards that? Like, how do we ensure that this, again, we have sustainability to make sure? Because we can't always rely on private or corporate donations for these, for this event. How, how do we take a look at that funding structure as it is right now?
Superintendent Jack Caldera, go ahead.
Through you, Chair. Great question. We did offset some of the expenses through some of our, as part of our budget for Special Education Department, and that will continue. It is a priority that we want to ensure that there is opportunity for students to participate. We were creative. There were a couple of envelopes of money that we were able to creatively use. And I wanted to thank, actually, the Finance Department for helping us kind of coordinate. I know they frowned upon the term creative accounting, but it essentially was a lot. We don't, we don't say creative accounting, no.
Thank you.
But we certainly in coordination. And then once we put the all call out, there wasn't a single school that thought the student participation fee was inaccessible, would be a barrier or inaccessible. And a number of schools have also identified that they have priorities. And so this part of, this, this complement or extension of the Best Buddies was something that all schools were eager to ensure participation. So there wasn't a barrier with regards to that. A number of the decorations are reusable. There's no year on it. So we're hoping that this investment will allow us to reuse some of the props instead of the signage year over year. I know that in the past, it's been a December or a Christmas theme. But if we kind of stick within the window of the Spring Mingle, we'll be able to reuse those props, the signage. But we also invested in some props long-term. So the backdrops, the activities and games, we'll have that for year over year. So it was a bit of an investment this year that we're hoping will benefit in years to come.
So that's... I love the idea of the Spring Mingle. However, it is close to the Life Skills Prom. So I do think that, you know, that opportunity in the winter to have something for students to connect and get to know one another is also probably really important. So I would just give consideration in the planning to see if you could have something available in that winter period. It's a long time to wait till the spring. And a lot of students do rely on this to make those connections with other students. And just, so just to confirm then, so individual schools do help to fund this event? Sorry, through you, Chair.
Yes, that is correct.
And just to follow up, is it only Life Skills students that are invited if it's a Best Buddies program? Or do we also invite other students to participate?
Superintendent Jack Caldera, go ahead.
Through you, Chair. It's, the partnership is with the Best Buddies program, and whoever is part of the Best Buddies is open. But we did not turn anyone away that wanted to participate. So it's, it's kind of the way that the program is realized in schools, it's associated or connected with Best Buddies, but it's certainly not. We didn't turn anyone away that wasn't part of Life Skills, for example, to attend the dance.
So were students who weren't Life Skills, like, are they, is that communicated to them as well?
Vice Chair.
I'm just curious on this point, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I'm just curious for students who, again, who are not Life Skills students, but, you know, who may have other special education needs that benefit from the Best Buddies program. Is it communicated? Do we know if it's communicated to them in schools? Or is it just sort of communicated to the Life Skills students?
Go ahead.
Through you, Chair. So we do let the schools know, and we communicate with the, at the FOS. So the department heads, special education resource teachers, SATS, CERTS, everyone who's present gets the same information. And we encourage and invite everyone who would benefit from the experience to attend. It is attached, like I said, to the Best Buddies program, but we do not have anyone who expressed an interest not be able to attend.
Thank you. Up next is trustee McGuire. You're the floor.
Yeah, thank you through you, Chair. I just wanted to thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera, for putting this together. My younger brother has... My younger brother does have autism, and he uses special education supports, and he'll be entering high school next year. So I'm really excited for him to attend an event like this. It's really wonderful to see. My question was kind of similar to Vice Chair Agnew's, but I appreciate the involvement of, like, students and stuff, particularly possibly in the future, maybe to help out with the Best Buddies program, who are like peer mentors for other students to come and support students during that. But I really appreciated the dance overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera.
Thank you.
Thanks, well received. Trustees, any other questions for Superintendent Jack Caldera? Seeing none, thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera, for presenting. It looks like the students, they had a lot of fun and, yeah, keep up the good work with the Best Buddies program. Thank you so much. We now move on to, our next item is delegations. We have no delegations, consent agenda items. The following items have been agreed upon at a consent agenda approval to stay, to stay on the consent agenda. Action items, 6.1.1 and 6.1.2, which is made up of policies, and 6.2 is noted items. There will be a single motion to approve the action items, and there will be no discussion. There will be no discussion on the noted items as well. I will now read the motion. Resolve that the Holton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items 6.1.1 and 6.1.2 on May 21st, 2024, as submitted. May I have a mover, please? Trustee Ohan Chanara moves, and trustee Powell seconds. Okay, we will not have any discussion. Call the vote on the consent agenda. Trustee Ohan Chanara.
I'm in favor.
Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Chua is present, online? No? Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Trustee Deepu.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
We have eight in favor, none opposed, no extension. Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We shall skip over item number seven, item number eight, and we'll move on to our next order of business, the action items. We will walk on these action items as usual. Three minutes for... The presenting trustee will present for five minutes, three minutes for question period, three minutes for debate, and then we'll close with three minutes for closing. Give me a second here. Okay. So we have a couple of action items. So we have just one action item. This, the first item, 9.1, OCST representatives speak to HCSB on the authorities on the Education Act, Section 170, 169.1, stroke 218.4. This item was a notice of motion at a 7th May 2024 board meeting and is now an action item. Trustee Saunders, can you please read the motion?
The following motion was shared May 7th. Whereas, given that there currently exists some confusion on the exercising of management authority under Sections 170, 169.1, clicking for the Education Act at HCSB, be resolved that the Holton Catholic School Board invite past president Oxta Pat Daly and current executive director Nick Melanetti to address our Board of Trustees before the end of the school year in order that they share with us their perspective and experience on the various responsibilities and authorities of the Board of Trustees, Chair of the Board of Trustees, the Director of Education. In doing so, we can create a more efficient and effective relationship among the parties and their various roles and duties.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. This item was moved by trustee Saunders. May I ask for a second for this item, please? Trustee Carabella.
Carabella.
Trustee Saunders, this motion is in order. I'm placing it on the table. You have five minutes to present.
Okay, thank you, Board Chair. Hold on, hold on, one second. Okay, okay. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the reason I brought this is, is, many times, myself and other trustees have asked questions of the, of the director and the director of finance, Superintendent Finance. And the responses we've got is that it's, it's an operational issue. And so when I, when I look through the, you know, the responsibilities of the trustees in 69.1, one, B, it says, you know, part of the role of trustees is ensure effective stewardship of the board's resources. And then further down, it says, every board shall effectively use the resources entrusted to it, use the resources entrusted to it for the purpose of delivering effective and appropriate education and manage the resources entrusted to it in a manner that upholds the public confidence. I've also included in the package sort of the duties of the, of the school board and the duties of the chair. And then finally, something from Oxta that just sort of outlines what trustees do. And the one issue is promoting accountability throughout the school board. So the reason I brought this was, you know, there obviously, there seems to be some confusion as to, you know, what is operational, what is non-operational, what's in our purview as trustees? So when I was at the trustee meeting at Oxta in the fall, I took the opportunity to talk to the president, Pat Daly, and executive director Nick Melanetti, and they recommended that this is not an unusual situation, that, that we should invite them to our board to speak to us and to share their experiences on what, you know, where the lines are drawn, what is operational, what is non-operational, what we as trustees can ask. So I appreciated that. So I brought this motion forward. And I think it was a nice offer on their behalf. I think they're both well-respected and friends of our board. And I would really appreciate their insight and leadership and direction on what they think is an operational issue, what they think is an issue that we as trustees can request details on. And I think that would help sort of, you know, alleviate any kind of friction or issues going forward. So, you know, we're two years into our mandate. I'm still, you know, not clear. This issue still comes up. And I'd appreciate, you know, people who have, I think, a lot more experience than any of us on what, what they would consider, you know, appropriate questions, appropriate areas that we can ask. So that's why I brought this forward. I noticed that in my, my motion, I said, you know, before the end of the school year, and that was before we got the ambitious planning memo from the director saying we've got all these budget planning. So I'm amenable to say in the fall, if that's, that works, I'll have a meeting in the fall.
We'll get to that, trustee Saunders.
Okay, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Saunders cautioned trustees and all trustees, in the, in your opening, you mentioned two names, and which are identifiable. When you put a motion, you speak to the motion, and you don't identify. Okay, so that's not really appropriate. So, so, yeah, so we move on. So trustee Kennedy has presented, sorry. Trustee Saunders, sorry. Yeah, your motion is in order. You are presented now. And we shall now open up question period. Give me a second. Okay, trustees, I shall now open up question time. We have three minutes for questions. If you'd like to talk about this item, please put your hand up. We shall, this is only question time. Debate will be later. So please put your hand up if you'd like to speak to this. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have questions? Your three minutes.
I do. Three minutes? Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I just have one question and for all the soundbites out there, I truly believe that good governance is our most important role as a trustee. So I agree with that. My question through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Saunders, Oxta has fantastic modules on good governance. So I'm just wondering, have we taken a look at that first? I have to say that because I sell for Oxta because I'm the director for Oxta, but they have very good modules out there.
Trustee Saunders.
Yes, I have. That sort of, it sort of spurred me to can, to bring this forward because there's still that element of what I think are are appropriate questions for trustees to be asking. And we're being directed that they are operational issues. So that that unfortunately didn't clarify my concerns.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanada.
Thank you. I do have a follow up through you, Mr. Chair, to you, Mr. Chair. I believe in as much education as we can get, but I have to ask the question. Have we had training modules on this in the past? I've been, this is my second term, so six years for myself. So have we had trustee sessions, PD? I think we have, right? One or two?
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. We have had several trustee PD sessions over the past year. Two specific sessions were held on governance, one in Jan, where we had a noted speaker, Marion Owl, and some trustees have attended that. And then we have had another one in the month of November where some trustees attended on governance, specific to governance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Any other trustees have questions? I see Superintendent Loft, yes, Superintendent Loft, you'd like to speak to a question?
I'll pass it this time.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, no other further questions, then we shall move on to to debate time. So trustees, let me. Okay, so I shall open up debate time. We have three minutes. Trustees, please feel free to to ask, to debate on this thing. Okay. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I guess I offer up as the debate that if there's some confusion from certain individuals, maybe, you know, maybe there could be a session for them individually. I I don't want to come off arrogant, Trustee Saunders, but I think I understand my role as governance. So I don't think I'd be attending to that. And as I agree for the soundbites out there, I don't disagree with training and good governance. I don't see this going forward for everybody. I think maybe you could talk to Oxta and see if they could do one-on-one concert conversations, that kind of thing. I've done that before. I've called them myself. So that's my opinion and that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Carabella, you're up next, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be supporting this motion as as we've gone into it. I've been around too, and I've always learned something when I'm able to attend. So I know that I've come across this as well, and I'd like it clarified. So I'd be happy to support this.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Vice Chair Agnew, your three minutes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, so much. As Trustee Ohan Chanada, you know, this is my second term, so you know, I've had a little bit more exposure. But I believe that the governance training sessions that we have had have have been fulsome. They've offered an opportunity for us to engage and ask questions. There are independent modules that are available because I agree, you know, sometimes things come up that may not have been covered in that particular session. We have an opportunity to do that. I also know that the AGMs and typically at our trustee seminars, there's also almost always sessions that are provided specifically on governance that provide really great overviews and additional questions. And then we always have the ability to reach out to other trustees as well for information. So I think, given how how busy we are, how much PD sessions that we do have, I know that I would not be attending this because I do feel like I have a good, strong sense of what we need from a governance perspective. But I would encourage trustees who need more information for sure to reach out for those individual sessions that are available to them. They are really great and a lot of them are available online and they're really, they're really helpful.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders, you'll get to close. Or do you want to make an amendment? Sorry, you you asked me for an amendment. This is the time where you could make an amendment.
I'd like to make an amendment that the.
Can we have the motion up, please, on the screen? So I see the amendment up on the screen. It's in red, right? Is that what your intention is?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, just a couple of words, it's fine, fine. Okay, so we'll move to an amendment. Trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders, one second, hold on. Okay, Trustee Saunders, is that correct? What do you see on the screen? The change in red.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, may I have a move, a second of that? Trustee Carabella. Trustee Saunders, you get to, you have five minutes to speak on this.
Oh, no, I just, as I said, we we have a very ambitious schedule between now and the end of the year, and I think it would be for the trustees that want to take advantage of this session. I think it would probably be better if we had a little more time rather than cramming it.
Thank you. Any trustees want to speak to this item, question? Any debate? Trustee Saunders, you get to close the amendment.
Yeah, I think, as I said, it probably would be easier for trustees who wish to participate in this session to, rather than try and cram it in June, it would probably be better in the fall. I think it would be a better, a better option.
Thank you, trustees, Trustee Saunders. So we have an amendment which was moved by Trustee Saunders, seconded by Trustee Carabella. We are voting on the amendment that is on the screen, the the words in red. With that, I shall call the the vote on amendment, on the amendment. Vice Chair Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Murphy.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
Opposed.
Trustee Deepu.
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
Opposed.
And Trustee Duarte is opposed. We have four in favor, five opposed. Amendment fails. Shall now come back to the main motion. So can we clear up the item red, please? So we have trustees who have spoken to this item, Trustee Ohan Chanada and Trustee Vice, Vice Chair Agnew have spoken to this item. Any other trustees wish to speak to this item? Saying none, I shall, Trustee Saunders, you get to close.
Okay, thanks very much, Chair. Yeah, just with regard to the governance issue, we have, we have had governance sessions, but this is a sort of very particular area that seems to come up repeatedly in terms of, you know, what, where where your responsibility lies. It seems clear to me that we've asked many questions that are in our purview but have been responded with its operational. And I think it's, they're important issues that we need to to discuss with regard to trustee Ohan Chanada's recommendation to one-on-one. So this came out of a one-on-one conversation with with the individuals involved. So I I did take advantage of that one-on-one opportunity and there was their recommendation that they they be invited. So as I said, these, these are people who I think are friendly to the board, quite respected, and I think it's a good idea to have them. And if trustees don't want to participate in that session, then I, that's, you know, that's up to to them. But I think it would be a session that I and I think several trustees would be very interested in attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. With that, I shall call the vote on the main motion. Trustee Kelly.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee McGuire.
Opposed.
Trustee Deepu.
Opposed.
Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada. And Trustee Vice Chair Agnew, sorry.
Opposed.
I missed you. And Trustee Duarte is opposed. Four in favor, five opposed. Motion fails. We shall now move on to to our next order of business is staff reports. Ten, item number ten, ten point one Georgetown West Catholic Elementary School Project Budget Approval. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, we have the Georgetown West Project Budget for tonight. Through the 2023 Capital Priorities Program, Halton Catholic was awarded one project so far, and that is the Georgetown West new build, so new new school build. And that included funding for a five hundred and twenty-seven people place school with a five-room childcare center, and it is to be constructed on the Burton Boulevard site, which is in northwest Georgetown that the board purchased roughly twenty years ago. With that, we have a total funding allocation of just over twenty-six point one million dollars for the for the new build. There's a breakdown of the proposed budget in Appendix A, but again, that's just an estimate. Project would would be designed and tendered, and then the actual prices would be what are realized through the the bid and tender process and not what's on your on your Appendix A, but that's just an estimate of where we think it it might fall. Staff are currently working on design and approvals for the project, and we hope to be in a position to open the new school in September twenty twenty six. But there's still many milestones to hit along that way in the build process, and we're still in early days. So we're hopeful of that, but it's still a little too early to call that right now. So there would be one resolution for trustee consideration that we'll bring forward at the next board meeting on June fourth, and that would be to approve the project budget of approximately twenty-six point one million dollars. And happy to take any questions that trustees may have on this report tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. So nice to hear this progressing. Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Merrick? Trustee Saunders.
Yeah, thank you through you, Board Chair. The the amount of money that we've allocated, is that a reasonable amount, given that I think a lot of our schools have have gone substantially or over budget just because of the cost of construction? So are you confident that this is a a reasonable amount and we'll be able to work within that envelope?
Superintendent Merrick.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. This is the first project that our board's been awarded on this going through the ministry's new process for capital approvals. And we're actually allowed to propose what we think it's going to cost versus using their formula, which tells us what it's going to cost, even though it's, it may or may not be correct. So this is an estimate that we constructed, it was about a year ago now that we did it, about last summertime, we did this estimate. But we we did try and forecast for inflation as well. So we think it's very close to what we think it should cost. And it gives us a, you know, it won't be like one did in the past where we're, you know, fifty percent underfunded. But obviously, if there was any challenges after we tendered the project, we, you know, had to look for additional funding sources and bring it back to the board to adjust the the project budget. But we expect it to be in the right neighborhood.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Thank you. Thank you. Up next, Trustee Ohan Chanada.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted Ryan to see I'm writing down September twenty twenty six.
Go to the board.
So I'm just writing down September twenty twenty six, see in my book, September twenty twenty six. No, joking aside.
It needs to be recorded. You need to record. You need to have the mic on because it's being recorded.
Hello?
Yeah.
Anyways, thank you for all the hard work. We're all very excited up at the north there. And I am writing in my book, September twenty twenty six, but I know you don't have a lawyer present, so I won't hold you to it. But best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Up next, Trustee Kennedy.
If, Mr. Chair, just wondering if we do go over the budget, do, how do, how would we make that up if it happened, or if it happens in the past? Do we go to capital reserves?
Superintendent Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, typically the process we've done in the past is we go back to the ministry and justify why it's expected to cost more. And they would, you know, they would either give us that verdict, either, no, we're not giving you more money, or yes, we are giving you more money. So that that's how it would work in this case. There's also the option of if we're, you know, say we're a couple hundred thousand dollars over budget, we can look at things we can, you know, extract from the project to 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 get it within budget. So that's typically how we did things pre-COVID, when we were, we were always in the right ballpark with the budget. We would just look at things, you know, different ways we could save money potentially, change some finishes and get within budget. And then through COVID, it just, the inflation just got so out of whack that, you know, we weren't even in in our, in the realm to remove things out of it without, you know, removing roofs and walls and HVAC systems. So that that's how we would approach it, either looking at things we could remove or going back to the ministry to ask for additional funds. But again, like I mentioned earlier to Trustee Saunders, this is a number that we proposed. We think it's reasonable. We'll go out to the market and see what the what the pricing allows and what it comes back at.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. No follow up? Okay, thank you. Trustees, any further questions? Superintendent Loft.
I just might want to add, maybe carry carry through, and I know Trustee Kennedy mentioned about reserves. The one problem to using our reserves is accounts against our compliant budget. So we could be balanced, and if we're using our reserves, we'd have to bring it into revenue to bring over, and it would impact our ability to have a compliant budget, even though it's been set aside for capital items, it would have an impact on that.
Thank you. Up next, Trustee Saunders. Thank you. Trustees have no further questions. So thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for for presenting your report. We shall now move on to our next order of business is information items. Eleven point one Director's Report, Director Klein, please present your report.
All right, thank you, Chair. I have the right one on. So trustees are aware there's really four items we'll be reviewing really quickly tonight. Diplôme d'étude en langue française, or DELF, Bike School Week, School Crossing Guard Appreciation Week, and then something that I've added, and I apologize to all of you, it was not in the original report, in particular to trustee and vice chair Agnew, National Accessibility Week and Red Shirt Day, which again was part of a motion a few years ago. And so I think deserves the attention that's warranted. DELF, otherwise known as the Diplôme d'étude en langue française, sponsored by the government of France, which takes this very seriously, as you're aware, the government of France takes the French language pretty darn seriously. Probably second up would be the government of Quebec in terms of the defense of the French language. Sponsored by the government of France, not only sponsored by the government of France, but it is administered and stewarded by the government of France as well. And anyone who tries to move forward with this, of course, is held to very high accountability from the guardians of la langue française. It marks the official diploma of language proficiency in French, and so it is also seen as something that is a metric across the world, too. So when one says I'm at this level of French, and you use the the terminology that is part of DELF, that seeing I'm not on the screen here. Oh, there. That does have an impact as well in terms of getting jobs in France or any of the other Francophone countries. In terms of the composition, students must complete one of four exams. The exams, of course, not surprisingly, reading, writing, listening and speaking. And they are based on their level of proficiency, and students can decide what level of exam they want to take, maybe against what you might think. A level is a lower level, B level is the upper level. So B two is the highest level when it comes to the assessment. So if someone scores proficient in B two, that would be the creme de la creme, as they would say, en français. And that would be something that would be, again, students would use this if they're taking a year to go work in France or one of the other countries where French is predominantly spoken. And again, it allows people to compare apples to apples. In terms of the unfolding of it here, there was a report to trustees in late November, early December, giving a sense of where we're at with it. And it's extensively, I guess, administered here, more than many other boards at Halton Catholic. Nearly all of our high schools are represented in terms of the taking these exams, these tests. Criterie is the only one that isn't for this year. Of course, Criterie is growing and. Ceteri's the only one that isn't for this year. Of course, Ceteri's growing, and the reason why it wasn't this year was it's very small. The numbers from last year to this year grew by fifty percent. Those numbers, uh, reflect this year about three hundred students who took the, uh, tests. About, uh, I think one-twenty in first semester and one-eighty in the next semester. So about three hundred over the year, that's a lot. We have forty-five teacher correctors, or, uh, they are the ones who administer the exam and score the exam. And they, uh, uh, again, are trained to do that through, uh, the, uh, the training that comes from, uh, a teacher corrector, uh, consultant. We have one person who has taken the, the training for that, uh, and I know the Romanian Ontario who took it. The standards from the French government are very high, and we have one person who managed to, uh, pass, uh, pass that, and that is our consultant, Renata Dean. So she is someone who can train others now, so she would have the confidence of, of France. I'm not sure if that puts her in any high stead. And we had, uh, in terms of results, at eighty-eight candidates, uh, score in the B two category, B one, one-eighty, and A two is thirty, uh, eight. And with ninety-two percent as a high score, ninety-one and ninety-nine percent, uh, respectively. Something that I remember very, very well as a former principal was Bike to School Week, not, uh, unusual for schools, is, uh, many, uh, school communities would, won't say complain, but remark on the fact that we have a dearth of students who walk or ride their bikes to school, and often there's too much use of cars to drive students to school, and we all know, of course, that's not always a good thing, in fact, rarely a good thing. And we recognize that for reasons of personal health, uh, both physical and mental, that familiarity with one's community and environment and the environmental sustainability, that learning to ride, uh, a bike and learning to, and having that promoted is very, very invaluable. Many of us here, I'm sure, uh, mark that as part of our maturation as a child heading into young adulthood, was the freedom that riding a bike wherever we went, uh, gave us. And again, a lot of lessons that aren't necessarily school taught, uh, that made us the, uh, the adults we are. May twenty-seventh to thirty-one, it's nationwide, and schools need to register. And, uh, the HCDSP is a partner, if you go on the website for this, you'll see that we are, along with our friends in the public board, uh, partner in this. The goal is to promote the option of biking to school. Often, parents have a sense that, uh, to have their students or their biking is a dangerous thing, obviously. Many things in life have their own inherent danger. We also know this is a very important, uh, step in, uh, independence and a very good, um, a life lesson. And since we're speaking in France, we also know that many European countries and other countries in the world, biking is, uh, not necessarily the, uh, the issue that it is here in terms of maybe not necessarily promoting with our, with our children. So that's something that's very important, of course, the weather has cooperated too. Connected with this, many of us, as we, uh, drive through this community of Halton or, or anywhere else, will notice from time to time, uh, someone who is acting as the guardian angels of our students. And, uh, some of them do so in a very disciplined, uh, quiet way, and some of them, uh, don't when they think that there's a danger for any of our children, and thank God for them. Um, we can honestly say that this is not highest paid job. We can honestly say that the hours are unusual. You work, you go home, you come back, you work, you come home, you go back and work. And it wouldn't be something that many of us would want, and yet there are people who kind of the old, uh, post-delivery adage, you know, in rain and sleet and snow, they are out there. And, uh, they will be like, uh, grizzly bears if someone tries to endanger one of our, uh, children. So it was a day, and now it's a week to allow people, and anyone can do that, obviously. Any of our parents, any of our community can from a shout of hello and shout hello, of course, if you're shouting. Uh, or handing some other tangible to someone to show how grateful you are, we're promoting that. Schools can do all sorts of things, and thank you cards, having students, uh, do other ways of, uh, of showing their appreciation. Uh, this is all good. Won't know the old, it takes a village, but we certainly know that our children grow up and are healthy, uh, because of the actions of others, uh, beyond us as parents and beyond us as educators. And finally, National Accessibility Week and Red Shirt Day. This is certainly on the, uh, notation for this month in terms of social media, which is a minor part of this. This is certainly something that's, uh, been promoted from, uh, day one this year in terms of showing the unfolding of the school calendar. And again, it's at a perfect time of year in terms of, uh, hopefully weather that sustains us through this. But National Accessibility Week two thousand twenty-four, again, is as it said, national, it's also in the United States. Our HCDSP community will celebrate, uh, the significant contributions of persons with disabilities in Canada and the accomplishments of people who proactively identify, remove and prevent barriers. There's lots of opportunities, lots of examples, how to do that from even as, uh, simple a task as, uh, staffs promoting reading materials and other works of art or literature that come from this community, come from Canadians and other na, uh, nations that, uh, produce that as well. Wednesday, May the twenty-ninth is designated Red Shirt Day, and that is on our calendar, one that is recognized across all, all our HCDSP schools. And I'd now entertain any questions.
Uh, thank you, Director Klein. Trustees, do we have questions for Director Klein? Seeing none. Thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. Uh, up next, if we move on to item eleven point two, Construction Report, Superintendent Merrick, please present your construction report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we have the construction report for May. Uh, and first up on your screen there is Milton number three, or St. Ceteri. Uh, you can see the building progressing along. Uh, we're now working on the exterior envelope of the building, and it's progressing well. Uh, we have some site works undergoing now with the, uh, the better weather, so, um, curbs are going in, asphalt's due to be, uh, the first, uh, well, the south parking lot is occurring tomorrow, uh, and lots of interior finishes happening, you can see some flooring there, painting, lockers arrive on Thursday this week, um, so lots of stuff on the go. And actually not showing the pictures there, um, they're actually working on the sports field as well, so the sports field's being leveled, uh, and getting ready for the track and the turf, uh, to go on the exterior. Uh, next month, again, lots of interior finishes to, uh, to work on. Um, there's a few curtain wall installations of the big kind of fancy windows, um, some areas left to complete those, and then lots of site works as well, uh, ongoing. Next up, we have Milton number nine, uh, a little more progress than, uh, than St. Ceteri. Um, this one here, the envelope is almost complete, a little bit more, uh, brick veneer, uh, the kind of the finishing touches going on now. The interior is taking shape, you can see some, like ceramic tile in the hallways, um, waiting on lockers there as well, but they're due to show up, uh, later this month. And then mechanical is well progressed, we have a lot of, uh, the rooftop units in place and a lot of mechanical doctor work, uh, and services already in place. Uh, and then next month, uh, continuing on with interior finishes, uh, and site works as well, there's, uh, lots of site works to do there on, on the exterior. And then lastly, we have Oakville number four, um, this one's actually nearing completion, uh, with the exception of the, uh, the exterior site works. Um, but you can see from the inside that the washrooms look, you know, almost hundred percent complete now. Um, they're working on some of this, a lot of the classrooms are also complete, working on a lot of the specialty areas, so gym, library, uh, the elevator's going in now as well. Um, so, uh, over the next month, again, working on the exterior with the better weather, uh, and then finishing up the specialty spaces. Uh, we should have occupancy on that one within the next probably four weeks or so. I'm happy to take any questions that trustees might have on our three new builds that are ongoing.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, any questions for Superintendent Merrick? I have just one quick question here, is that, uh, are we notifying parents in all the communities that, uh, the progress of the work being done, at least the schools' principals notifying the students who are going to come to the school?
Yeah, if we, for, um, the two elementary schools, Milton nine and Oakville four, uh, we've just been posting on our, uh, on our construction report site. We're, we're in well in hand with those openings, um, so there, it's posted on there that they are going to open in September two thousand twenty-four. It also says that Milton number three, St. Ceteri, is opening in September two thousand twenty-four. It's, I mean, it's a little bit more, um, hectic there, a lot more to do, uh, but the, the plan is still, um, to open those in, uh, in September two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and we have been sending out communications to the, the, uh, actually, I think it went to, I think the last one went to all of Milton, I can't remember, but it went to all of Milton, uh, just to inform them that, um, we're making progress. Um, there's still lots of things to do there, but, uh, we're making good progress, and that's still the goal, is to have, uh, the school open for September twenty-four.
Thanks, thanks, Superintendent Merrick. Uh, any further questions for Superintendent, Superintendent Merrick? Seeing none, we shall move on to our next item, eleven point three, HS, HSTS Annual School Hour Report, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school, school year. Superintendent Loft, please present your report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Attached, everyone, we have the HSTS Annual Hour Report for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. Uh, please note that there are three schools that are impacted, uh, with the change of, uh, start time and end time. Um, you can see they're in the list attached, uh, these will be effective for September of two thousand twenty-three and are, and are the result of a principal request. So all three of our secondary schools requested this to accommodate a fifth period. Um, the other times relate to our new elementary schools, we're confirming the, the start time for our new elementary schools. St. Ceteri's time will not change, it's existing time that it currently is, so there's no change to St. Ceteri's time. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Trustees, do we have questions? Uh, sup, uh, sorry, trustee Ohan Chanara?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Loft, probably over to Superintendent Cordero. Just for those listening, because I had to pick up the phone and ask, because I didn't really understand, you know, the extension of the school day and how that positively affects the school. If we could get some description on why we're doing this would be very helpful.
Superintendent Cordero, would you be able to speak to this?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Ohrenzorota, excellent question. In, in recent years, uh, Christ the King, one, one of two schools, I think, has, uh, gone with the change of timetable. Last year, it was Bishop Reading. As the school either sustains or grows, uh, it makes it more flexible and more opportunistic for the school administration to create and offer additional sections in a variety of course areas. Christ the King is a school that has a unique profile, has a lot of schism tech courses, and as we expand provincially in the area of skilled trades, this would be an opportunity for us, given the staffing challenges that are ongoing provincially and in this board, an opportunity for those students to have more choice in their schools with more sections and a variety of subject areas.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Follow?
I, I do have a follow-up, and thank you, Superintendent Cordero. Uh, what is our communication plan moving forward once it goes through the board tonight? What is our phase in for communication, I guess is my question, so our parents are all aware.
Director Klein, uh, Ms. Swenden, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Chair, and to trustee Ohrenzorota. Actually, the message has already been drafted, so we were waiting for this to be presented at the board, and then it will be going out tomorrow to the schools impacted.
Thank you. Uh, trustees, any further questions? Regarding item eleven point three? Not, uh, thank you, uh, Superintendent Loft for presenting your report on the HSTS Annual, Annual School Report. Uh, next order of business is miscellaneous information, twelve point one, Student Trustees Update. Student trustees, please present your report. Who's presenting your report?
Uh, yeah, I believe Dia will be, um, if she's still online, she will be presenting our achieving.
Yep, I'll be starting it off with, I, I just wanted to make sure, can everyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, okay, just wanted to make sure. So I'll be starting off with the achieving section, um, and Lauren will be taking over for Ari as well. On May fifteenth, uh, which was last week, we conducted our Student Senate Monthly General Meeting. Two of our senators passed proposal of the Student Senate Subcommittee Contingency Plan that require all our subcommittees to create summary reports on their accomplishments during this school year and ideas for the upcoming term. Uh, we believe that this would be beneficial for our senators to continue to stay informed on the collective impact that they have created in the board, while also paving the way for new and transitional senators that will take the reins to lead the senate next year. So this will be happening at our next senate meeting, which is also our last senate meeting of the year in June. Additionally, we all, we've also begun our student senate application process for the upcoming two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five school year. The deadline for applications will be this Friday, May twenty-fourth. Our senators have been working hard to promote this amazing leadership opportunity for our students, highlighting accomplishments these past year while also emphasizing the great power which student voice has in board decisions. We encourage students to learn about this opportunity through the HCDSP website, as well as by reaching out to your home senate and staff advisors. Lastly, this upcoming Thursday, um, so this Thursday, May twenty-third, the student trustees are participating in the Ontario Student Trustees Association Annual General Meeting in Toronto. As always, we hope to learn and grow our valuable skills to lead the student community, and we especially look forward to mentoring our incoming student trustees. We're also attending the conference, uh, this week.
And I will be covering believing. So on May fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-four, student trustee Chua, along with other local GTA Catholic student trustees, attended the Oxta in faith, which is Friends and Advocates of Catholic Education, Catholic Education Lobby Day at Queens Park. Um, throughout the day, student trustee Chua was able to chat with local MPPs and spread the good word about Catholic education and the importance of the Catholic education system and our publicly funded board systems. Notably, the MPP for Ottawa, Orleans, Stephen Place, and former OCSB trustee shouted out the HCDSP in front of the whole crowd, um, during the leaders and MPPs opening statements for the Lobby Day event. And today stated that Halton Catholic is a shining example of the excellence of Catholic education and what that brings for our students, which is wonderful to hear about our board. Um, and then our belonging section, at our latest student senate meeting, there are many different avenues in which our student senators participated in our call to the pillar of belonging. Some students engaged in a focus group with strategic communications and research and development to help gather student voice about to model their strategic plan. Um, so I've heard that session was wonderful and it was very fruitful. Um, other senators were also able to view two sets of posters, um, related to believing that the HCDSP is in the process of creating and provide their feedback on their design and impacts through a digital forum. And these two activities were a wonderful way to gather student voice in many different topics that impact student, um, experience. So thank you to Ms. Swenden, as well as, um, Dr. Colamore for their work to put this together, we really appreciate it. Um, additionally, at our senate meeting, we also had a proposal from our Mental Health and Wellbeing Subcommittee proposed. Um, and it was passed, and it aims to increase the amount of therapy dogs in schools by creating a framework for senators to reach out to their school C Y Cs if their school does not have an, um, established therapy dog that is, um, visiting regularly, I guess I should say. We are very proud of this proposal due to, due to the positive impact that it'll have on all of our students with their m- mental health and wellbeing and their overall sense of belonging board-wide. Um, it's a pleasure as a student trustee to be involved within the student senate and organize these meetings, as we're really able to see the power of student voice in action. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustees, for presenting your report. Trustees, do we have questions for student trustees? No? Thank you so much for presenting, uh, your report, well done. With that, we shall move on to, uh, item twelve point two, uh, OCSTA update, trustee Ohan Chanara, do you have an update?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I sit before you asking forgiveness, I wasn't very organized last week, but I do have a report that I've asked Elizabeth to attach to the minutes, because there's a lot of very great links. So if you'll bear with me, I'll just kind of read through it. Um, Fall Regional Meetings, I did send everyone some emails, the Oxta Fall Regional Meetings have been scheduled. It'll be on Tuesday, September the seventeenth at nine thirty AM. This meeting will be hosted by the Toronto Catholic District School Board at their Catholic Education Center. Registration information is forthcoming, but please save the date and time in your calendars. Uh, Social Media and Supporting Student Wellbeing in Catholic Schools. The final installment of the Catholic Education Leadership Speaking Series on social media took place on May the twenty-second. The panel discussion included an examination of Catholic District School Board's current practices and strategies established to address the impact of social media on students. These presentations are part of the Oxta's priority on encouraging conversations and sharing information with regards to the Catholic identity of publicly funded Catholic education, current issues in education and supporting the role of Catholic trustees. Oxta, the ninety-fourth AGM and Conference, six years away from a hundred. Uh, this year's conference theme was Catholic Education: Fulfilling the Promise. In recognition of the fifth anniversary of the poignant and guiding pastoral letter Renewing the Promise authored by Ontario's bishops in two thousand and eighteen, the gift and promise of publicly funded Catholic education in Ontario was elaborated upon during the keynote address delivered by His Excellency Bishop Gerard Berger, President of the Assembly of Catholic Bishops of Ontario. All trustees are invited to listen to the recording, which is in the member sending, center of the Oxta website. Then you'll see a really great picture of all the student trustees, visual. Oxta welcomed the highest number of student trustees at an AGM. Oxta welcomed the highest number of student trustees at an AGM ever during this year's event. Included in this picture that you'll see with students is Oxta president Patrick Daly, Director of Education Anne O'Brien, and former student trustee alumni award recipient and conference speaker Ben Verboom. Workshop highlights are included in the May fifteenth issue of the Oxta news wire. Oxta election results, Oxta elections were held during the AGM in conference. So congratulations to Michael Bellmore, Chair of the Sudbury Catholic District School Board, on his election as president of Oxta. Congratulations are also in order to Marino Gazola, Chair of the Wellington Catholic District School Board, on his election as Vice President of the Association. Past president Pat Daly will serve with President Bellmore and VP Gazola on the Oxta executive. Reason, Region twelve Oxta director Mark Mullin was reelected by the membership to represent Oxta on the Board of Directors for the Canadian Catholic School Trustees Association. And just on a personal note, I'm honored to return to the Oxta Board of Directors as Region thirteen representative for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six term. Thank you to the trustees of Halton Catholic for entrusting me to this position. The complete list of trustees are on the Oxta Board of Directors website. And the Oxta Year in Review, Oxta's annual year in review documents and key initiatives, advocacy priorities and special projects of the association. The twenty twenty three, twenty four year in review was released at the Oxta AGM and is also available online. And as I previously said, it will be attached to the minutes, so you can get at those links that I'm speaking to. But thank you for your patience and your forgiveness.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn. Trustees, do we have questions for trustee O'Hearn? Seeing none. Thanks so much for presenting our report, trustee O'Hearn. We shall now move on to, we do not have correspondence. Move on to item number fourteen, open question period. Director Klein, do we have any questions received?
Chair, we don't.
Thank you, Director Klein. We move on to item number fifteen, in camera. We do not have to go in camera. And our last order of business is resolution regarding absentees. We have trustee Chua, who's absent today. May I have a mover, please, to excuse trustee Chua. Trustee Kelly moves and trustee Powell seconds, all in favor. Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Trustee Chua is excused. Shall now move on to a final order of business, which is adjournment and closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustees Saunders and trustee Carabella, all in favor. Anybody opposed? Seeing none. The motion carries. I will now lead us in the closing prayer again. This is the Pentecost prayer, which I prepared earlier before Director Klein. Sunday is the face of the Pentecost. Please join me in the sign of our faith as I recite a Pentecostal prayer, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. O God, who by the mystery of Pentecost's greatest feast sanctify your whole church in every people and nation. Pour out, we pray, the gifts of the Holy Spirit across the face of the earth. And with divine grace that 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 was at work when the gospel was first proclaimed, fill now once more the hearts of the believers through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Thank you for a great meeting. Good night.